All right, everybody ready? Gentlemen and ladies, let's go. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, January the 18th, 2022. We welcome you here this evening. Thank you for coming out. We have several good things going on tonight in our business session, and so we're glad that you're with us. As we get started, I'm gonna go ahead and start with our roll call before we go to our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. So I'll go ahead and do the roll call. I'll start with Mr. Beal coming this way, if you will.
Jonathan Beal here.
Ike Perkins here.
David Stevens here.
Joe Gibbons here.
Chrissy Thomas here.
Todd Purdue.
Ben Willis.
Ralph Presley was here.
Thank you.
Scott Hildebrand.
Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk.
Joshua Harris.
Joshua Harris, Communications Director, thank you. All right, I will now ask those who were on...
Chief Phelps.
Oh, Chief Phelps, there you go. Chief, thank you. Is here, okay. I will go ahead and now ask those that are on Zoom, if they will, to come in, and I'll start with Donna Bean, Finance Director.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Fire Chief Kent Hare.
I'm here.
Thank you. Economic Development Main Street, Kaylin Horn.
I'm here.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director Kenny Storey.
I'm here.
Thank you. Public Utilities Director Radford Thomas.
I'm here.
Thank you. Plan Director Jenny Wheelock.
I'm here.
Thank you. And Public Works Director, if he's not worn out, Jared Wright.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. And I think on the news topic, Katie Davis is with us tonight on Zoom.
City Attorney.
City Attorney, Mr. Rohr, that's right, TJ Rohr.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I think we have everybody covered. If there's anybody else on Zoom that I did not call, we'll get to you in a minute, or you could go ahead and let us know you're here.
Chris Cordell is here.
Okay, thank you, Tris. We'll be back with you in just a few minutes. Thank you for being on Zoom tonight with us. Okay, we'll then go ahead, as we go to our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance, would like to continue keeping our frontline workers and everyone involved as our COVID situation continues to be tough in entire straits right now. We hope that things will continue to move in the right direction, but we appreciate what everyone is doing, not only our doctors and nurses in our hospital, our frontline, our firemen and policemen, and all our workers who are EMS, and everyone who is doing so many things. We'll keep you in our thoughts and prayers as this continues, and we'll pray for this to make changes to come in the near future with this. But thank you again for all you're doing. We'd like to keep in our thoughts and prayers Cindy Day, who are Director of the Caldwell Heritage Museum. Her husband, Jack Day, passed away this past week, and we are so sorry to hear that. Jack was a veteran and part of American Legion, was part of our American Legion baseball program for many years. He not only coached, but was involved, and Jack was, will be well missed in our community. So please keep Cindy and her family in your thoughts and prayers over the next few days on that. And again, let me say thank you to everyone with our snow removal. It's been, I know, a tough couple of days, but we appreciate all the work that's going on there. Thank you for the hard work. I know it's been tough to get out and get everybody going in all the side streets and everything, but I think we've done a great job. So thank you, Jared, and your crews, and everyone who has been involved in any way with helping with that. We know that we still got a few days to go, but hopefully we'll get it all taken care of soon. All right, let's now rise for our moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have several special recognitions to do, and we're gonna first start with a gentleman who has served our Police Department for 30 years plus, and we certainly are... Well, in a lot of ways, we look at it as though we hate, it's bittersweet. We hate to see Sergeant Moore leave our department after so many years. He's done a wonderful job. I've known James Moore, I wanna call him Mousy. That's what I knew him growing up as, and Mousy, I got to coach him when he was a little feller. He was a lot shorter than me, he's bigger than me now, but I got to know Mousy a long time ago, James Moore, and a great friend, and thank you for your service throughout the city. Come on up. And Chief, will you come up as well? I'd like to present first this resolution to you for your service, and just say thank you for all that you have meant to this department. Whereas on the 13th day of July in the year of 1994, James Edwin Moore was appointed as Lenore Police Officer by Chief Jack Warlick. That, as of the date of this resolution, he has served the City of Lenore with great distinction under the direction of four police chiefs, and has formed close relations with the citizens and youth of Lenore through its genuine concern and professional dedication to duty. That society and law enforcement as a whole has undergone many changes and challenges over the last 30 years, and Sergeant Moore has stayed abreast through these changing trends to remain an effective mentor and leader within the department and the community at large. That James has served in a number of capacities during his law enforcement career, to include his most recent position as Sergeant overseeing the school resource and traffic enforcement teams, as well as Explorer's, Post Advisor, Special Response Team Crisis Negotiator, School Resource Officer, and Ready Response Team Member. That due to his dedication and diligence to perform it admirably, he was promoted to Sergeant in 2009, and was recognized by his peers as the department's 2021 Officer of the Year, voted Best Police Officer of Caldwell County in 2017, and received the Lenore Optimus Club's Officer of the Year in 1999. That James completed the FBI LEEDA program and SRO Certificate Program in 2019, received his master's degree in 2014, and received the Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate in 2004. That he has played an active and vital role in the community and with the youth, both on and off duty. To include coaching and foster parenting, James Moore has a heart for ministry and has served in church leadership roles as pastor, deacon, choir member, and the president of the Shepherds Board. That he has humbly served the citizens of the City of Lenore and Caldwell County, and will be retiring on February the 1st, 2022, with close to 30 years of credible service in the North Carolina Local Government Retirement System. Now, therefore, being resolved by the authority of the Mayor and City Manager, and on behalf of the City Council, that James Moore has been an exemplary employee and is himself the epitome of the professional law enforcement officer. His contributions to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Lenore and officers of the Lenore Police Department will be held in high esteem and remembrance by this governing body, as well as persons impacted by his accomplishments. This the 18th day of January 2022. Thank you very much. I have one other thing to present to you tonight, and this is something that you've protected for 30 years. King of your city. Very proud to present this to James E. Moore, Sergeant, the Lenore Police Department, in recognition of 30-plus years of dedicated and outstanding service to the City of Lenore and its citizens by the Lenore City Council, January 18th, 2022. James, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Congratulations. Very welcome. We can hold this for you.
Yes, sir.
You can.
First of all, I would count it robbery if I didn't give honor to God first. So that's who I give honor to first, is my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And then I want to thank each and every one of you for your support that you have shown me throughout the years. Mr. Hildebrand, you've been an inspiration to me. I remember when we first started picking out, picking up trash runs, you'd be right alongside us picking up trash, laughing and cutting up. You know, usually don't see people, you know, in your positions doing that, but you armored yourself down and got out there with us, and I greatly appreciate that. And I greatly appreciate my chief back here, who's supported me all through the years. And I'd also like to give honor to my pops up there, Councilman Perk, who's just been with me throughout this journey, always been a support. And also, I'd like to just thank each and every one of you for your support. Bittersweet for me, but, you know, we got to move on and start different chapters in our life, and once again, just thank you, and thank you to my sister and family for their support. Once again, thank everyone.
Thank you.
First off, we were planning on doing a retirement ceremony for Sergeant Moore on January the 27th. After some discussion with him, he's got quite a few number of family members. We're gonna do it on March the 4th, which is a Thursday. He wanted to do it, which I think is a very cool thing, he wanted to do it at the King Center, so we've talked to Lester and we've scheduled that, so we'll send out some information on that. So there'll be some more things from the Police Department on that day. But when I think about Sergeant Moore, you know, he is an example of a community police officer. He was born here, he went to school here, he worked in our community shortly before he got into law enforcement, and he has been here his entire, close to 30 years, serving our city. And when you think about an example of a community police officer, I can't think of a better example. You know, we currently need men and women, we need good people now more than ever, but he has been an inspiration. He has went through some things that I will never experience. You know, there's a number of years where he was the only African-American police officer in the entire county. That's something that I will never 100% completely understand, and he went through it and was always professional, and always did an outstanding job. And I tried to talk him into staying until I retire, and he said, "Well, how much longer you got?" And I told him, he said, "Oh, no, I gotta go." So we are excited for the next phase and the next season in his life. We're happy for him, and I said in the paper, you know, retirement for law enforcement, it's not given, it's earned, and he's definitely earned.
Gentlemen, let's shoot a picture. Come join us here.
Yeah, Sergeant Moore holding one, and then you have one. Come on, wait, don't get him. I'll get opportunities. Come on. Stand behind him. Chief, you wanna be in the back?
Sure. All right. Yep. Yeah, you get behind him, Mike, you're good. I like that pop, I like your holy pop, that's good.
All right. Y'all look good, everybody smile.
Thank you. David, your seat's right there.
Okay, pops.
I know what that's like. Tonight, the bittersweet continues, as we say, well, not goodbye, but at least goodbye for a gentleman who also I had the privilege to know for a long, long time. I coached him when he was in Little League as well. I mean, that just tells you how old I am. But Ben Willis has been a council member for us with over 10 years, and we have a proclamation as we say thank you to Ben for all of his service on this council and across the state. I have, we have a proclamation I'm going to read in just a second about him, but Ben just came in, a young man, and just took hold, and has loved being a part of it, I can tell. He has involved himself in, oh gosh, just so many things across, not only here in the county, but across the state. He's done a number of different things since he's been on the City Council, from teaching school, running a retail business, being in education, Small Business Center, gosh, we can on and on that he's been involved. Now, Ben will be going to work for the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and we're excited about that because we are part of the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. So it'll be great to have a gentleman like Ben involved in it to work with us. We expect a lot of special favors, but we won't say that out loud too much, but we do hope that, and we know it'll be a great working relationship. We're proud for Ben and his family, who have been so, you know, just done so many great things. So anyway, Ben, come on down, I'm gonna read this proclamation for you, and present you with this and something else as we go. This is a resolution honoring Benjamin Keith Willis, whereas Ben Willis has served faithfully and diligently as a member of the Lenore City Council since December 2011. He served as Mayor Pro Tem from 2015 to 2019, and whereas Ben Willis submitted his resignation on January 4th, 2022, to accept a position with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments as Community Economic and Development Director. And whereas, as an elected official, Ben has devoted his time, energy, and talents to this city, and provided experience, sound judgment, and ardent support while serving on various regional, state, and national committees, to briefly name a few. North Carolina League of Municipality Executive Board of Directors served two terms as District 10 Director. Western Piedmont Council of Governments Policy Board, Air Quality Board, Planning Board, and Transportation Advisory Committee Board. National League of Cities, Small Cities Committee, and the Information Technology and Communication Steering Committee, that's naming a few. Whereas Ben Willis has reviewed and deliberated all matters, facts, and proposals presented before the council in a fair and sound manner, and at all times keeping the best interest of the citizens of Lenore as a first priority. And whereas Ben Willis has worked consistently to further Lenore's economic, cultural, and aesthetic development, as evidenced by the many successful projects accomplished during his tenure on City Council, including helping create and contributing to the city's Brownfield Development Committee, working with the City Council on establishing long-term strategies and goals to ensure the fiscal strength and stability of the city, supporting the implementation of a market rate compensation for city employees whom he values as the heart and soul of the city. Now, therefore, being resolved that the City, Lenore City Council, in a regular session, assembled this the 18th day of January 2022, hereby expresses sincere appreciation for our friend and colleague, who through his excellent leadership and dedicated service to this city, has earned respect and proudly made lasting contributions for the betterment of the city. And be it further resolved that I, as Mayor, by virtue of authority vested in me, as Mayor of the City of Lenore, North Carolina, and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, and all citizens, do hereby extend our deepest gratitude and highest commendation to Benjamin K. Willis for his devoted and outstanding service, this the 18th day of January 2022. Congratulations, sir. And we too, I'd like to present you with this key to the City of Lenore that you helped make a great place to live, work, and play, and you've done a great job. We will miss you here, but we know that you'll still be doing great work for our city and county through the Western Piedmont and across this great state, we know that. This is presented to Benjamin K. Willis, Council Member, in recognition of his dedicated and outstanding service to the City of Lenore and its citizens from December 2011 to January of 2022 by the Lenore City Council. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Very well.
Well, first and foremost, I've got to thank my family, my wife, Jamie, and my two kids, Jane Elizabeth, they've given 10 years of allowing me to do this, and having to miss ballgames and having to do that, so there's a reason why. You see typically an older person up there, and it's because of the time, they have the time and the money and the energy to be able to do that, but it's so important. I did say it. I'm just talking to a couple of y'all. But it's, I can't express enough how important it is to have younger people get involved in local politics, state politics, so it's very important to have that voice, and I really appreciate my wife and kids for allowing me to do that and their support. My extended family, my mom and dad, and my, I'm from here, and I come from, I come, I'm just super blessed to have great grandparents who grew up here, who worked at, my grandfather, Dr. Phail, worked across over here at Dula Hospital, and my other grandfather was Berkeley Willis, who gave loans to people who'd started their banks and their factories and stuff back in the day. And when you come from that, you appreciate where you're coming from, and so I wouldn't be here without them, and so I'm very blessed, very, very blessed. Next, I want to thank the citizens for allowing me to come and support you. Thank you for voting for me, thank you for supporting me, thank you for the words of encouragement. I wouldn't have been here unless you believed in me, and it's been an honor representing the people of this town. It's been fantastic. I say this every year during budget, I say it multiple times, we get these keys and we get all this other stuff, but it's the department heads and all the people that work in the City of Lenore that make us look good. I mean, you guys are the ones, I wish they were here, but through the cameras, I guess, wherever I'm talking, talking to the cameras. You guys rock. Our department heads, every one of you guys are amazing, the staff, this is a wonderful, wonderful city, and it's because of your leadership and because of the great teams that you guys have assembled that make all of us look good. And so thank you so much for running and doing what you do, from seeing Jared out there on the streets today, shoveling off the snow, and everybody enjoying it, doing it with a smile on their face. They appreciate what they do, and you see, it resonates here. It's not like that in other cities, but it is here. So thank you so much for all that. You make me look good, you make us all look good, so you guys, all the credit goes to you guys. Council, you guys, you guys are, you're my boys and my girl. Each and every one of you are, I can call friend. Every one of us brings so much different, something different to the table, and I've enjoyed going to conferences with you, learning about you, learning about your families, learning what your, what your passion for the city has been, is awesome. I enjoy coming to this, I enjoy going to meetings, I love it, it's something I look forward to doing, and it's just, I hate to say goodbye to it, but I also need to give a shout out to some other people that we served with, Merlin Perry, great, great person who I served with, Louis, Louis Price, gotta give a shout out to Louis. Ron, Ron Stillwell, who, the late, great Ron Stillwell, all patriarchs in the community, and got to serve with those great guys as well. And then Kim Emerson, who is also a good friend. These are all great people we get to serve with. Lane Bailey was an excellent manager, and Scott, you man, you're awesome, you're great. I've enjoyed every moment, man. For you guys that are coming up for the seat, know that you're coming to something special. So you got a great group of people, they'll guide you, you got a great department, you got the best city in North Carolina. We're not too big, we're not too small, but you can make a difference, and know that you can make a difference, and don't take that for granted. Thank you all for everything. I really, really appreciate it, and I'll be seeing you around.
Come on down, let's take a picture.
I forgot why these guys are coming down here. Why these guys are coming down is Joe, who was my baseball guy, who made... He was my coach, too.
You can't ask for a better, for a better...
All right. Everybody look at me and say cheese, a smile. I can see smiles this time. One, two, three, cheese. One more, one, two, three, cheese.
You're good. There you go.
Get in. Touch me.
Thank y'all, very special night, as we honored Sergeant Moore, who's a fine police officer in our department. We will miss him. Sergeant Moore is also a minister at West Lenore... West End Mennonite. West End Mennonite Church, so if you get a chance and you want to hear him preach, please go do that. He does a great job. He's a soft-spoken gentleman, but he does a great job there. And of course, Ben, we will miss you. Thank you for your service and all that you have meant to all of us. The friendship continues...
Yep.
...in a different way now, so we will, we will look forward to working with you in so many different ways, so thank you for that. And I know we have another meeting that you get to attend, the committee, the whole next week will be, actually, your officially last one, but tonight was your official council meeting, last one, so we're excited that we still get to see you and work with you, so thank you for what you've done.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll now move on to our agenda, to a time for fulfilling the seat of Mr. Willis. That's gonna be a tough job, I can tell you that. He's done a great job for 10 years, but tonight, we have some interested, we hope, interested candidates who will address the City Council regarding their interest in fulfilling this vacant seat created by this resignation of Mr. Willis. First of all, let me say to those who are part of that, I want to say thank you for your willingness to serve the citizens of the City of Lenore, and for your interest in the City Council seat vacancy. Tonight, we will ask each of you, if you will, to tell us about yourself, give us your background information.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you for that. And we will ask you to tell us about your qualifications and what you think that you will offer and bring to service to the City of Lenore City Council. So those are the, that'll be the question that we will pose to each of you. We will ask that you limit your comments from three to five minutes, if you will, and I'll ask Joshua Harris, who will be kind of our timekeeper, even though we don't want to have to do that, but we'll kind of let you know where we stand on that, so if you keep your comments to that. Let me say this, of course, there's this, the one seat available that we will be looking to replace, but I would like to invite all of you that are here tonight, if you have this interest in serving our City Council, that we, if you would be, if you're not selected, that you would think about serving our city. We have a lot of boards, a lot of things that you can be involved in, and since you are interested, we would love to have you a part of it in some way. So there's other ways in which to serve this city, so please keep that in mind. We have an application process for that, and we have a number of great boards. I tell you, without our boards, they are unbelievable what they do. I tell you, without our boards, they are unbelievable what they do to help out the city council. From our planning board, our business advisory board, and so many others that we have. And there's a lot of open vacancies at different times for these seats. So we'd ask you to consider that as maybe an alternative if it comes to that. So please keep that in mind as we move forward. Tonight, we will allow you to do that speaking. One more ask, Joshua, will you come pick this up? We have numbers in the envelope. If you would let the candidates, the interested, draw one out and from one to five, so that we'll know the order in which we'd like for it, so it's completely, completely fair. And we will, the order that we, well, at least the people that we know are Mr. Justin Butler, and I think Justin is here, Mr. Michael Corecia, Michael is here, Mr. Kent Greer, Kent is here. Mr. Medlock, Grant Medlock, is Grant here?
No.
I don't see Mr. Medlock. And Mrs. Trish Cordero is on the Zoom. She is in quarantine. So we will draw for her and she, you know, in that order. So whenever you receive your number from one to five, we'll ask you to come to the podium, introduce yourself, and just give us any information that you like, that would tell us why you were interested in serving. What number is she?
Trish got number five.
Okay, so we only have four here, is that right?
Three.
Three in here and then Trish.
That's four.
She's number four, actually.
Okay, she'll be number four, actually. Okay, all right. If you will, we'll start then with whoever received number one. If you'll come up and introduce yourself to us and tell us about.
Number two.
Number two.
Number two. Last number two to come up.
It's nothing like one first unless I'm second.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Good evening. Thank you. Let me just say that if I'm not chosen, congratulation to whoever does. You know, and I'm sure they'll do a great job in filling Mr. Willis's seat. But, you know, I'm a local guy here, raised in, born and raised here in Caldwell County. Went to school here, off to college, came back, decided that I wanted to stay in the community, give to certain things, civic duties and things that I thought I could be beneficial in. In my information that you probably have submitted to you there, I had, you know, local Highbryton High School graduate.
Who's that your name?
Oh, Kent Greer, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You know, I just assume everybody knows me. But I actually thought I was in a Baptist church because nobody was sitting on the front row.
I understand. We feel like that sometimes, too.
Yeah, exactly. My wife and I, Susan, we live at two eighteen Robinwood Circle here in Lenore.
Thank you.
Two sons, Colin Hunter, and my oldest son Kyle is married to Carrie. My mother and father were raised here in Lenore, too. My father was the superintendent of mails here for the Lenore Post Office for twenty-seven years, along with six years of military service in the Army, and my mother was a housewife. So I have one older sister, and she lives in Mooresville. Couple of things here about civic duties and church related things. You know, I'm a current member and serving on the Lenore City of Lenore Planning Board. Also am currently serving on the Caldwell County Planning Board as well. I'm the past president of the Caldwell County Rotary Club, past president of the Hamery Furniture Management Organization for several years, prior chairman and member of the Deacon Board at Rotary His Baptist Church, prior Treasury Member of Rotary His Baptist Church, and currently an active member at Living Home Church here in Lenore. And just for the record, Mr. Gibbons did not coach me in baseball.
Thank you.
You know, I'm sure we all have comments we wanted to make and kind of keep them brief, but I thought it was important maybe to give you a little bit about my current employment situation. Many of you knew me from serving, trying to obtain a Chick-fil-A. And that is still on the back burner. At some point, maybe down the road, that might come to fruition. But I'm not willing to leave Lenore, and I'm not willing to leave North Carolina. So I figure the chances of that are slim and none. But I do want to serve and give back here in the community. And just for my employment, I'm currently the general manager of Four Train Corporation in Hickory, and we own multiple telephone companies here in North and South Carolina and also in Southwest Florida. My desire here is to make the city better, to serve, most of all, to listen. You know, if I'm elected to the board, you'll understand I'm not one to speak first. I'm one to listen first. And that's just the way I was brought up. I think it's important to listen. But I wanted to give a couple of minutes for you. I know you said us address you, but maybe there's a question you have for me that maybe you haven't seen in my bio or something that I could answer for you. So I'm an open book. You know, I tell you, I'm a black and white guy. There's no gray for me. So but those are my comments, but if you have a question, I'll certainly be willing to answer it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Greer. Anyone have a specific question they would like to ask from the council?
Did he kind of answer both of the ones you posed?
He is, yes, he's done that. So we said we would leave that for the time if he had other questions on that. Thank you for that. Yeah, we understand that you are from here, and that's great. Appreciate your service on our planning board. Is there any particular thing that you would like to see happen in Lenore that you might want to just touch on briefly?
Sure. You know, I don't have any agenda at all or no hidden agenda. Come with open mind. I just want to see the city grow, to be a servant to the citizens and the City of Lenore, and to see what we can do to keep our community growing. You know, we see, you know, you hear comments out in the community about people driving by, people driving through, this, that. You know, I think there's nothing more than important than listening to what people have to say. But I would certainly love the opportunity to serve and give back. And like I said, if I'm not elected, that's great. I'll consider it again and certainly wish the candidate the best, you know, best of everything.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Greer? Okay, thank you very much. Certainly appreciate that. All right, that was number two. Number three. We didn't mean to be that boring.
Hope everyone's doing great this evening and hope that everyone has had time to enjoy the snow. I appreciate the, I'm sorry. My name is Michael Corecia.
Thank you.
I'm a resident here in Lenore, thirteen twenty-five Jolly Place. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening, to speak to you all, to the appointments, to fill the vacancy on the city council. And I believe that I would be a great addition to the council, and I'm ready to serve. I do first want to thank council member Ben Willis for all of his years serving Lenore. And I wish you the best in your work with Western Piedmont COG. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, so my experience, growing up in poverty, watching my family and neighbors struggling to make ends meet drives my passion for public service. Growing up, I would always try to stay involved in things that were helping people who were struggling around the community, rather be food drives or other community-led events, even doing some service in some local volunteer fire departments. I was always looking for ways that I could get involved, ways that I could give back and help the community. And I want to, I want to take that experience and that passion and serve my community and work with council members and other stakeholders here in Lenore, in our city, to help lift the people up here in Lenore. I've been incredibly grateful for the community members who supported me in last year's election for Lenore City Council. After receiving four hundred and nine votes and finishing as runner-up, I have received many phone calls and emails from folks around Lenore encouraging me to apply for this vacancy. During my campaign last year, I've had a great opportunity to meet and listen to people and small businesses around Lenore. A lot of great folks who love the community, do a lot and put a lot into this community, and who deserve a lot from this council. And I'm stepping up to be a voice for those people. Local governments have the most immediate impact on our lives, from housing to jobs to small businesses. And I want to be a part of continuing to build a Lenore where people would want to raise a family and they can do so comfortably. So I thank all of you for your consideration for this position, and I would be honored to serve this community alongside all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, anyone have any questions for Mr. Corecia before he sits down? Was there any other question? I want to make sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, who was next? That would be number four, I guess, or yeah, four.
That'd be me.
Okay.
My name is Justin Butler, and I'm at twenty-one twenty-four Old Farm Road, right at the city limits. I originally moved here in two thousand thirteen, taking a full-time position at Caldwell Community College as the director of the Associates in Fine Arts Music Degree Program. I worked with Mr. Willis for quite a long time. In this, sorry, a little bit about myself. Originally from Los Angeles. I went to high school and graduated in Charlotte, North Carolina. And then I attended Appalachian State for my undergraduate and master's degree in music performance, where I received leadership scholarships and music scholarships. I am currently a doctoral candidate, doctoral student at Appalachian State in their Educational Leadership Program. And my wife and daughter, we decided to move to this community, to Lenore, because of all the Beatle things. We've been living in Boone since about nineteen ninety-eight, so we would come down through Lenore quite often. We had a lot of friends that lived here, and we decided it'd be a great place to raise our family. My wife and daughter are band members of the Malaseet Nation, which is a Native American tribe in the exotic country of Canada. All right, my writers are off tonight. My wife is a member of the Lenore NAACP. And for my experience, I've worked on many state boards. I've worked for private nonprofits. I've worked for private for-profits. I've worked in public sector positions. Most of my career has been in university and community college. I chair many boards. I'm one of the executive members and founding members of the North Carolina Association of Fine Arts. So we have fifty-some music directors, art directors, and theater directors that we all meet together to talk about state standards and policy. So we enact policy. I've actually written a couple of different, the Korean College Promise for the North Carolina Community College System in music. So that has been a statewide policy that I've worked on, and it's been approved, and it's been effective for several years now. I am members on several boards, including performance measures at Caldwell Community College, where I look at transfer success of our students from Caldwell Community College, specifically Caldwell County and Watauga County as well. I am members, I'm a member of the board at the Appalachian State Community Music School, where we have created a satellite campus in Hudson, where it's kind of, sorry, it's not in Lenore, but it was centrally located in Hudson through the hub. I have worked actually pro bono for the City of Lenore as a consultant with Mr. Story and Kyle, a former employee, to help diversify and create more inclusion in the summer concert series. In my letter of intent, I also included my curriculum visa. That's why it's so long. It's really, the letter intent's only one page. I try to keep it short because I understand how a committee works and how much time is important. I have served for, as the mentor and career advisor for hundreds, hundreds of students and youth in Caldwell County. I've had a big impact in Caldwell and Watauga Counties throughout my career. I've literally worked with thousands of students from Caldwell County as, you know, a career advisor, a professor, just in many capacities. I also am a member of the college's global students curriculum, which looks to bring diversity and inclusion from all Caldwell County residents, which is an important part of who I am as a person and policies that I like to see enacted. I, there's several of the boards of the city council that I would be interested in, including the tourism, housing, parks and rec, planning board, historical preservation. They all seem very interesting, and, you know, I would enjoy the opportunity to serve Lenore in that capacity or any capacity, really. I also offer free scholarships to students from West Caldwell, sorry, West Caldwell, South Caldwell and Highbryton, as well as the Early College in Casa for tuition-free music lessons. And I just do that in my own personal time because I feel that's an important aspect of development in our youth. I would like to see, being at the community college, you know, we're tightly bound with the City of Lenore and Caldwell County. So I have the opportunity to learn about the challenges that the city and the county face in particular, like the housing that we have, economic impacts, career and act, career and college training, specifically career and technical training for our county and the industries that we have here. So the economic vitality of the city is really important to me. We chose to move here and raise a family here, and we want to see it prosper. So if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer anything.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from any council members? Thank you. I think you covered what we asked. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you very much, Justin. Okay, and next is, and Trish is on Zoom with us tonight since she's under quarantine, but Trish Cordero, and we will let you go ahead when you're ready, Trish.
Okay, great, thanks. I'm actually new to Lenore. I moved here on Mother's Day, twenty eighteen. So I have not been here that long, but since the time that I have been here, I've joined multiple boards on the Early Head Start Policy Council, as well as their Board of Directors. I'm also on the Head Start Policy Council and going to be a board member for them next, next year. From here on out, I would like to be able to bring my knowledge from Miami as being a bigger city and try to see how we can make Lenore grow bigger than what it is. We love it here as opposed to Miami with the cost of living. And I've also participated with the UNC Chapel Hill Snap Ed Research. And I've been to a couple of the transportation meetings where I would like to also try to establish a bus route here in Lenore. My kids right now, I have one in college in Sub X, one, and then one is actually going to start elementary school next year, with another one going into pre-K. We, I know that this is a very big position for me to fill as of right now. Mr. Willis has done an awesome job. I've been keeping up here and there. But I feel that there should be also a younger generation, as he has mentioned, to step up to the plate and start to take over so we can offer different perspectives and different aspects that may or may not have been introduced in the past before. As far as reaching out to more clients or more of the population that may not realize what impacts just us showing up to the meeting as residents would have on the City of Lenore. I believe that might, that might be all. I hope that the person who is elected can encompass every level of the citizens of Lenore, not just focus on certain areas. And I believe that that's all.
Okay. Thank you very much, Trish. Any questions for any council members before we? Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank, I'm sorry you couldn't be with us tonight. I hope you're doing well and staying safe. I know you said you were in quarantine, so I hope you're feeling okay.
Yeah, I personally didn't get hit, but my, my son actually did. He received it from school. But he's been doing fine. Thank you.
Okay, well, good. Well, we wish you, him and all, your family, the best on that. Well, thank you very much for being with us. Thank you. I think that's all our candidates that are here. We had We had one other that did put in, but he is not here tonight, so we're assuming that these four are our intended candidates for it. Thank you all for coming out and being with us. What we will do now is the council will take all this information in, we'll deliberate on it. We, we cannot meet together, so we'll, I'll be individually talking with all the council members for their feelings on everything. We'll pull all that research and information together. We can't meet even in closed session on it, so that's not the way all this works. It all has to be very open and will be. We will, after we have our discussions and come to what we feel is the consensus, we will then have a vote at our February 1st meeting, which will be our next meeting in two weeks for this position. And at that time, we will discuss it. We fully wanted to be the new candidate to come on, the new member to come on in February, so that by our budget session, which begins in February, on February the 11th, that we'd have someone in place and have some time to, to pull all that information rather quickly together, obviously, as that goes. The seat that is, will be open is a two-year seat. Mr. Willis would been, would serve till December of 2023 on the term, so that will be the time on it. And after that, whoever's selected would have the opportunity to, to run again for a four-year council term. What's that? Time commitment? Yes. Obviously, I think you, hopefully, that you all have had a chance to, to study about, that you are interested in what time it does take to be a member of this council. There is a lot of extra stuff besides just being, coming to council meetings. And, and of course, the budget is one of our largest things, and the thing that we really spend a lot of time with is putting all that together, and that will be coming up over the next couple of months. But we also ask our, our council members and others to attend ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings and business, you know, just anything that concerns our city in any way. We are the leaders, and we feel like that we need to be there to be a part of those things, and we ask our council to, to do that as well. So all those things, please take into consideration as you can, as you continue to deliberate thinking about this. We hope you have. I'm sure you probably have already think about that, but it does take some extra time. And then there are meetings across the state that, that a number of us are involved in and doing things, that we stay involved with that, meeting with our legislators, and just a number of things that you might not even think about, that, that we have to do as we try to keep our city moving forward and growing in the best possible manner. So if there's any other questions that you have, please reach out to any of us to ask, anything that you want to know, that is fine. But we will, like I said, we will take all this under consideration, and we will be back with, with that vote in, in a couple of weeks. So thank you again for being with us tonight, and we will move on now to our next part of our council meeting. So thank you again. Okay, we do not have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items, which consist of minutes from the city council meeting of Tuesday, January the 4th, 2022. Item B is a resolution. That, of course, is approval of the resolution in honor and recognition of council member Ben Willis for his dedicated and outstanding service to the city council, city Lenore, and its citizens as submitted. Item C is a resolution, an approval of a resolution in honor of recognition of Sergeant James Moore's dedicated and outstanding service to the Lenore Police Department, the city of Lenore, and its citizens as submitted. Item D is a resolution for surplus property. This is approval of a resolution declaring Police Sergeant James Moore's badge and service weapon, which is serial number three, thirty-seven, CO-12014. As surplus property, Sergeant Moore will be retiring from the Lenore Police Department effective January 31st of 2022. So he would like, of course, certainly to have those for his service. And then item E is a proclamation for Black History Month. Approval of the proclamation proclaiming the month of February as Black History Month throughout the city of Lenore. And that is presented. We have always honored Black History Month, and this, we just have a resolution that states that we are in full support of Black History Month and what goes on with those events during the month of February and, and any other time, because there are a lot of things that go on, on that. So anyway, that's our consent agenda items A through E, and I will open that up for any discussion or motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that the consent agenda items A through E be approved.
Okay. Motion from Councilmember Perkins, that our consent agenda items A through E be approved as presented. If there's no other question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for that. We'll move on then to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. And we'd be glad to hear from anyone who would like to address us. Anyone? Okay, thank you. Seeing no one. We will move on then to, we do not have reports from our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council, there are a couple items for information this evening. The planning board will meet on Monday, January 24th, at 5:30 in these chambers. The committee of the whole will meet on Tuesday, January 25th, at 8:30 a.m., third floor, City Hall. The Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, January 26th, at noon at the airport. And city council will conduct its annual planning retreat, as the mayor referred to earlier, on February 11th. That's a Friday, beginning at 8:30, and that's going to be held in the meeting room at Blue Ridge Energies at 100 Cooperative Way. Tonight, you have one item for consideration. It's a final plat for Summerhill Subdivision Phase Two. This is for eighteen lots. This was originally, preliminary plat was approved back in 2007. So it's been many, many years to get to this date, but I think the activity in housing has started to take off a little bit in the community, and we've got folks wanting to go back and build some houses out there. So you have the final plat for your approval. It's consistent with all of our preliminary plat plans, and staff recommends approval. I know Jenny Wheelock's on the phone, and maybe some folks from Summerhill as well. But Jenny, do you have any comments to add?
No, this is exactly follows the preliminary plat that was approved back in 2007. It's just a little weird that it took this long to get before you, but I'm available for questions.
Okay. You heard the recommendation from Mr. Hildebrand and backed up by our planning director, Jenny Wheelock, on what's going on out there. Great, great area. It's been kind of depressed for a while with all this, but with housing beginning, as it's booming again, there seems to be a number of, of houses being built in this beautiful area, right off of Norwood Street there. It's a nice area, and hopefully this, we, these lots will be, we'll see a lot of things going on there in the near future. So you heard the recommendations. We'll open up for any questions anybody might have concerning these, this Summerhill Subdivision Phase Two.
It's good to see it happening. It's, you know, number two on our, our priorities as a council is our affordable housing and market rate housing.
Yes, it is.
And so I'm glad to see that finally come to fruition. David and I remember when it first came before us, in '07. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat as presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Purdue, that we approve the final plat for Summerhill Subdivision Phase Two as presented. If there's any other discussion or question? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously, and we hope good things will continue to move forward there. All right, we'll move on to the recommendations and report of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
No report now, there are three or four things to talk about in closed session. One might take a little while, but the other three are mainly, two or three are just mainly quick updates.
Okay, good, thank you. We'll look forward to that in just a few minutes of getting going. All right, I do have a recommendation for an appointment tonight, and this is a reappointment, really, for Councilmember Ralph Presswood, who serves a two-year term with the Western Piedmont Council Governments Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the MPO, and he would be the city's representative. Mr. Presswood has served on this for, I guess, a year or two, two years, and we appreciate that. And he said he would be, would be glad, and jumping up and down to do it again, so we, we are honored to have him do that. So if it's all right with you, I would recommend that as an appointment to you for your consideration.
My final motion will be to, make a motion to approve Ralph Presswood to reappointment for two more years.
We have a, a, a motion from our lame duck councilman, Mr. Willis, for the approval of Mr. Presswood to the Metropolitan Planning Organization of the Western Piedmont Council Governments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Presswood, for serving on that. I know you've been to the meetings and doing well, and we appreciate that. You know, serving on these is something that's very important that we be a part of, because we keep up with what's going on, not only through Western Piedmont, but North Carolina League of Municipalities, the National League of Cities. And when we have representatives involved, we, we kind of know what's going on. So we appreciate that. And I know a lot of y'all serve on different things, and that's great to do that.
Mayor, do we need to make an approval for the railroad commission, or is that something for February meeting?
I think it's for February 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, and we will do that, sure, on that.
Who's on it?
David and me.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we did have a meeting after several years the other day, and that was good. So railroad is, is moving again.
And with some, with some prospects.
Yeah, with some prospects. That's exactly right. So that's a good thing for us on that. Now we'll move to the recommendations of any council members. Mr. Thomas, would you like to talk quickly about the NAACP?
Yes.
Martin Luther King Day yesterday was a great, great event?
Yes. So some of the council members were on, but the Caldwell Chapter NAACP held a Martin Luther King celebration yesterday. And we had about fifty-seven members that joined virtually, so it was important that even though we couldn't meet, normally we would do the memory march and then proceed on to Martin Luther King Center for an event, but great turnout. And we, they connected also the Spirit of the King Award. And then there were several members that received that. I don't remember all the names of everybody that received.
The Spirit of the King Award was Reverend, Reverend Wilfong, James Wilfong.
Reverend Wilfong. And there was a President's Award, so really just a good way just to remind everybody that Martin Luther King's holiday was a day of service on, of being on. And then just keeping that, that spirit of recognizing people that are doing great things in the community. So it was a really good turnout, and hopefully we'll be able to do more events during Black History Month that don't have to necessarily be virtual, but I think we're getting really comfortable with the virtual platform, so, but it was a really good turnout.
Do you have a calendar of events for Black History Month that you can share with us?
We can get that to Joshua. I think we're still, Lester's still working through some of those to see what can happen, kind of monitor some of those things. But there are some events planned, so we'll get that to Joshua, so he can get it out to the council members to, to be a part of.
Good, thank you for that. Anything else from any of our council members of anything that is going on?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to thank you when I was up there doing my, I wrote like a couple of things down, and I forgot to thank you for everything, so that's why I had to do that. But I also forgot to thank my parents. Geez.
Yeah, that's right.
They're, they're instrumental, and I was trying to go through my head of what I, what I forgot, but, so Mom and Dad, I love you and thank you. I wouldn't be there without you. And then my third thing, when you were talking about the MLC, I unfortunately had the, the crone got me, Omicron, I was infected with Omicron a week or so ago, and one of the, yeah, I'm good now.
Slide this way.
I'm good. Boosted, boosted and fully vaccinated, so people, you still need to, to go and get, get the, and still wash your hands and still wear the mask. That's very, very important. But the Martin Luther King Center is a place that people, there's, you can get tested. And the Martin Luther King Centers, we, when you, when it goes through your family, getting tested has been a thing, because you, everybody's got to get tested and everything changes. But they are tremendous up there. Now, it's this, it's not the rapid test, it's the long, it's the, it's the two-day test, but it's the more accurate one. So we're able to go right in there, so for people that don't know about that, that is a, that is a good resource if you need a place to get tested. Martin Luther King Center.
Good. Thank you, Dad. I'm glad you mentioned your mom and dad. I was going to tell you, Dad, that you didn't.
Yeah, yeah, please.
He would, he would say, I brought you into this world, I can take you out.
That's right. That's right. They're, they're awesome.
No, they're great, great, great family, your brother and your family, and I know they're very proud of you. And Jamie and your kids are proud of what you have accomplished and what you're still going to accomplish. You're just still scratching the ground right now with what's going on, so we appreciate this. Last thing I will say before we go to a closed session in just a few minutes, a lot of good things are happening down at the campus, at the old, not old. The, it's story. Lenore High School. And a lot of things have happened there, and we're really proud of, of the things that are moving forward with that. Campus, you know, consists of the auditorium, Foothills Performing Arts, had some programs there during Christmas, which were great. I hope you got to experience that and be a part of it. And then the Matt Cook Stadium and the gym, or things are going on there. We hope to relight, relight Matt Cook in the future for its use. So a very, a very interesting part of our city for us to have in downtown, that we can have a lot of events, and there's a lot of things being planned for it. So keep your, keep your eyes out on it, and we'll keep you posted as things continue to move forward there with what's happening. But it's a very, very great part of what's going in our city, and very proud, so. If there's nothing else to come forth, we do have a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A, subsection 3. We will enter into this closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege. And we do not have anything to come out of, okay, there will be no action taken from that. So need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
Councilmember Stevens makes a motion to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. We'll go into closed session. Thank you all for being with us. We appreciate it very much. We appreciate it very much.